All right. Good evening and welcome to the March 24th, 2025 City Commission Meeting. We are going to start with an invocation given by Commissioner Douglas, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're able.
Tonight I'd like to congratulate Stagecrafters, their production of a play called Silent Sky. Silent Sky started on the 100-seat second stage at Stagecrafters, and it tells the story of Henrietta Levitt, a pioneering astronomer working at the Harvard Observatory in the early 1900s. It explores the personal sacrifices she had to make to pursue a career whose groundbreaking discoveries revolutionized her field. The play won state and regional competitions and will compete nationally in June at the American Association of Community Theaters Competition in Des Moines, Iowa. For nearly 70 years, Stagecrafters has delivered outstanding artistic experiences to audiences coming from all over metro Detroit, and Silent Sky is just the latest example of their passion for shedding light on issues of society and our humanity. Please join me in saying, "Break a Light" to Silent Sky as it represents our city on the national stage.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you, Commissioner Douglas. Next, leave Mr. Getchow. Will you be introducing our new communications director?
Thank you, Pro-Tam Hunt. I am thrilled to introduce the city's first new communications director, Kara Sokol. Kara started with us last March 17th, and I welcome her up to introduce herself to the community.
Hello, Commissioner. So good to be here tonight and meeting those of you I haven't met already. My name is Kara. I have actually been a Royal Oak resident for nine years. I bought my house here just a short time after I kind of relocated back to the Detroit area for a job in Ferndale. I've been a communications director in government for 10 years and communications, marketing, branding, storytelling for close to 20 years already. So I, you know, as a resident here and, you know, really involved in the conversation in the community, I am beyond thrilled and honored to be able to communicate and storytell on behalf of the city I love so much. So I'm thrilled to meet you all tonight, and I encourage you to reach out to me if you've got questions or you want to have a conversation about anything.
Well, welcome, Ms. Sokol. We know you're a part of the community already, but welcome to City Hall.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kara. I'd also just acknowledge and add, I'm thrilled that we can add more resources for Judy Davids because she's been a solo act here for a long time. So communications is critical, and I want to take the opportunity to acknowledge and credit Judy for all her work.
Thank you for that. Okay. So next, we are moving on to the approval of the agenda as their motion. Approval by Commissioner Ricey, second by Commissioner Herzog. Any discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we have an agenda. Next, we're moving on to public comment. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issue, both on the agenda and not. I ask that comments be directed to the City Commission and not to individual commissioners. The city made it easier for you to request follow-up on an issue. Simply scan the QR code you see displayed or sign in with the staff in the lobby at the meeting tonight before speaking at public comment. If you wish to speak tonight at public comment, please wait until recognized by me, then come to the podium. For the record, you will state your name and address. Please be mindful that the City Commission wants to hear from everyone who wishes to speak. Comments are limited to three minutes or less per speaker, not per topic. There is a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your allotted time. If you do not wish to speak tonight, please make sure your issue has been made clear when, I'm sorry, if you do not wish to speak tonight, please make sure your issue is made clear when submitting either the QR code or during sign-in with the staff. Please note that the City Commission will not respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes and will address questions when the agenda topic is discussed or refer to it, refer it to the proper city department if it is a matter not scheduled on the agenda tonight. Staff is also taking notes and will look into the matter as needed. Any public comments to the City Commission or to the manager will be responded to post-meeting utilizing the contact information on the public comment sign-in. Please make sure to double-check your information for accuracy. All right. So we will start with Ms. Oliver.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Trish Oliver. I've lived in Royal Oak since 1986. Tonight, a pay increase for the mayor and commissioners is on the agenda under Item 7 S entitled "Receive and File Local Officers' Compensation Commission: Resolution Report and Determination." Why not state the agenda item more clearly so that everyone easily can see what is under consideration, such as pay increase for mayor and commissioners? Is this intentionally deceptive? Do the mayor and the commissioners deserve a raise for what has been traditionally a volunteer position, especially in light of still having a structural deficit after years of tax increases, including an anticipated future tax increase? Should the mayor and city commission receive a large pay increase without allowing the public to vote on the pay of city elected officials as stated in the city charter? The pay increase increases Mayor Mike Fournier's pay by 16 times, from $1,000 annually to $16,000 annually. Likewise, it increases you, the commissioners, pay 24 times, taking it from $500 annually to $12,000 annually. This makes this mayor and commissioners the most highly paid in the area. Mayor and commissioners' compensations were compared to other Oakland County cities, such as Ferndale, Oak Park, Farmington Hills, and Birmingham. This pay increase makes Mike Fournier the most highly paid mayor of those comparable cities. Why not also compare to Rochester and Claussen? For example, the Claussen mayor and commissioners get about $10 per meeting. Why not include that in the analysis? How about the rest of the other 11 cities that border Royal Oak? Why even include a comparison Sagatuck and Grand Rapids to the comparison for the commissioners? The report states that by having some compensation, Royal Oak politicians, it opens the door for working single parents to participate in governance. How is it logical that all of you who are not working single parents benefit from this pay increase right now, so that someday possibly a working single parent could benefit down the road? Is that using virtual signaling for your own monetary gain? This pay increase will happen automatically next month unless a motion is brought forward tonight by one of you to reflect the increase, and if that motion receives at least five votes in favor of rejection. Thank you for your consideration.
All right. Anyone else would like to speak?
Thank you. Bill Harrison, resident since 1941. Sorry that Mayor Fournier isn't here to hear what I have to say. I was looking at a previous commission meeting on my computer, and I noticed in the upper-right-hand corner, there's an image of the Ukraine flag. It is customary, whenever you fly a flag of another nation, that you also include the flag of the United States. I would hope that you correct this. In addition, the agenda lookup system is abhorrent. It's terrible. You need to do something about it. Last meeting, I recall that for over three years, I've been asking for the Elizabeth Hamer Park to have a historical society or historical placard. It's imperative that people know the background of this family within Royal Oak. The Historical Society has a whole shelf of information about the Hamer family. I don't know why it takes so long to get a standard placard up that talks about this. Staff increases. I mean, we're bloated. Paul Brake, the former city manager, increased his staff by 80%. And as I recall, our new city manager added an assistant before even taking the job or being active in the job. The other question I have is, where do we stand on our reserve as a percent of the budget? The previous financial director, Ms. Lichtenberg, showed that we have, showed a graph of the trend over the next few years, and I called it the going-out-of-business curve. I'll be interested to see what comes up in the next budget meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak this evening? In the white shirt.
Hello, Rick Karowski. I'm also here to speak on the consent agenda item about the pay raise. It must be nice to be able to formulate a committee and put all your friends on it and then have them decide that you need a major pay raise. And by the way, I don't have a problem with getting a compensation a little bit higher than what you get. I do have a problem with the way it's done. Again, a quote-unquote independent commission. Your compensation currently is in the city charter. If we're not going to follow the city charter and amend the city charter for compensation, then why the hell we have a city charter? Why don't we just make a commission where we want and do it the hell we want? Secondly, again, how the commission was formulated and staffed is a little bit disconcerting. And the worst part is, you're putting this on a consent agenda. At least have the common decency to pull it off the consent agenda, discuss it, and have everybody vote on it so they don't re-stand, especially those of you who are running for reelection. Don't put it on a consent agenda on an inane topic level and then just kind of sneak it through and no one's looking. This is garbage, okay? Be upfront with it. Have the backbone actually raise your hand and say, "Yep, I need 500 bucks a meeting." Yeah, I know, you have to go to these other committees. By the way, no one's forcing you to go to those other side committees. Those can certainly be rejected from your workload because a lot of them, they're not formulated except for, except for the planning committee. There's not a single one that is required by law for you to attend. So I would hope that you at least have the common decency to pull it off the consent agenda, discuss it, and vote on it and say, "Yeah, I'm worth $12,000 to $16,000 a year." Thank you.
Trying to figure out what's buzzing here.
Sorry about that.
It's still going off.
That's me, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. In the green jacket.
In regard, my name is Nancy Sumner, and I live at 1502 Northwood Boulevard. And I've lived in Royal Oak for, since 1980. In regards to your pay increase, I don't know anybody who in the real working world gets a $16,000 a year pay increase for their job, unless they're somebody way high up in a company. And I don't know anybody who is supportive staff gets a $12,000 a year pay increase. I think you guys really need to look and see what you're doing to this city. We have to have work redone on Northwood Boulevard because of the people that put the speed humps there didn't do it accurately, so it's got to be redone. Who's paying for that? Who's going to, when are we going to get Webster redone? That road is torn apart, and I see you're doing 13 Mile. Webster is in worse shape than 13 Mile. I don't think you guys think things through accurately or with much common sense. So think about your raises again. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, the blue vest.
Hi, my name is Rob Loscom. My grandfather was born in Royal Oak. My mother, he went to Royal Oak High. My mother went to Royal Oak High, graduated from Kimball. Been in this neighborhood for a while. Just an idea for you, since we're all talking about money. Once again, I got a, they're going to tear up, fix the sidewalks. In Ann Arbor, when the sidewalks are off a little bit, they grind them. It would really save you a lot of money if you just ground them instead of knocking them out. I mean, they are trip hazards, but you can grind them. You got trees all over the place, it's going to keep going, but that'd save you a lot of money. It's a lot easier to grind them than to bust them out. And I call the police all the time to tell them that there's people dragging on Woodward Avenue at Normandy and Woodward. I know they know it. I don't know what you guys can do about it. I'm just sick and tired of listening to this roaring noise like people don't live in here that, and now it's, now seems to be the game is make your car make as much noise as possible. And I know Natalie Price is trying to do something. I know that's a state, I've talked to the mayor, and that's a state highway, and there's nothing you can do, but I'd like to know if there's, what you guys are going to do about it. It's, I know it's huge, I know it's on everybody's agenda. I'd like to hear something at some point, but I give it the best, but it's insane. I have no comment. I think $16,000 is reasonable, and everybody should make more than 500 bucks a month. So keep it up. Great job.
Anyone else like to speak this evening?
Good evening, James Wegman. Last year, I attended, along with you, for many, many hours reviewing and setting the budget for this fiscal year. At the time, I think there were four requested new positions, which you all agreed was not a good idea to do because we couldn't afford it. Department managers wanted them, they put in for them, and you didn't accept it. So on tonight's agenda is a request for an IT position, a brand-new position. It states it will save money over current consultant expenditures, but I couldn't find anything in there about how much it's going to save. If approved, this will be the third new position approved this fiscal year with an impact on the personnel budget of as much as $469,000, not counting administrative costs. Also, in the consent agenda is what everybody's been talking about, your increase in salaries, which would create another $84,000 hit on the budget. Although I agree that an increase is long overdue, I would not have used a per-resident, including children, calculation for comparison purposes, since you are paid from property taxes. Also, while the city's included, for comparison, included several out-of-town, there was nothing from Rochester Hills, whose council members are paid $6,945, or Rochester, who gets $1,375, and Madison Heights, which earns $500. And plus, it appears that unless you vote otherwise, these automatically become effective next month. Three weeks from now, you will begin the process of reviewing the next fiscal year's budget. Both the IT position and your pay increases should be delayed until then so that, like last year, you can make an educated decision on whether we can afford them. We do not want another new millage or an increase in existing millages on the ballot. So that's about my, then last year, I brought this sign forward that whenever there's a public hearing, it's zoning, and I wanted planning also, that these be installed in the yard. The interim city manager agreed, they were ordered, the building, zoning, planning, whatever departments have them, and apparently what they're doing is they're giving them to the property or the petitioner to install. Last month, or the beginning of this month, before the zoning meeting, I went around to three of the four properties that were on zoning, and none of them were installed. So I'm asking if you can change the requirements and have the city staff install them in the property. If they have a concern about going on personal property, just include it in the application or put them out on the right of way. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Nancy Poprowski. Tonight, you will all be getting raises. Congratulations. I'm not saying you don't work hard, but I've been an unpaid volunteer in Royal Oak for almost 40 years, from cleaning up parks, empty lots, streets, advocating for trees by encouraging the city to save mature trees, calling the city to maintain trees that need trimming or care to keep them thriving. I've supported the animal shelter, library, historical society, schools, et cetera, by giving monetary donations or needed supplies. Since 1987, I've been loyally attending and sometimes commenting at city, planning, ZBA, DDA, EAB, historical preservation, and other city informational events. I once, in five days, attended 10 city meetings for the master plan, which was morning and night. You've heard my frequent public comments, hoping that eventually they might help you in understanding and acting in favor of the residents and planet's needs. These comments can sometimes take several hours to prepare. As a resident, I've attended the Dream Cruise, Royal Oak Art Fair, Farmer's Market events, block parties, pride events, holiday tree lightings, parades, Halloween Spooktacular, Arts Beats and Eats, MLK Day, Resource Fair, Summer Concert Series, Earth Day, et cetera. I've had to pay for entry, parking, et cetera, at many of these events. The explanation of why you should get raises has a section where it states, "Representing the city at civic events and fundraisers." You just heard the events I've attended in Royal Oak. These same events are listed for you to represent. I don't believe this document is finished until it explains that at numerous events you attend with your family and friends, free of charge, without parking fees. This document, in order to be transparent, must list your fringe benefits or bonuses, et cetera, to be complete or finished. I also believe that the mayor and commission can take turns at events unless they were going anyway. Now, back to volunteering for almost 40 years, without pay, but happy to serve. Can you all raise up and make sure your dedicated residents, who spend countless hours in front of the mic, and he's not here, get some benefits, even though we don't always agree? How about a bonus, time vouchers for public comment? What a great way to recognize people who really dedicate their time to make Royal Oak and the planet a better place. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else like to speak? Yes.
Hi, Mark Sackett, General Manager, Royal Oak Leprechauns. Welcome, City Manager Joe. I'm not going to go with your last name, Joe, I'm sorry, I can't, I'll figure that out one of these days. So it's been great getting to know you, and also Kevin Yee from Facilities. I appreciate your willingness to learn about the Leprechauns and how we can benefit the community. As the city has seen several new faces, so have the Leprechauns. We've got, we've added four new sales and marketing members, and we brought in three new operations people to help our team. We're working hard every day to try to make Memorial Park the place to come to this summer. We're about 62 days away, so look out. And obviously with Mayor Mike not here, I might have to have Commissioner Hunt call in the relief for opening day first pitch, so look out. Was he feeling better? So we have had a lot of interest for our first pitch. Dave Woodward, Chairman of Oakland County Board of Commissioners, Garland Gilchrist, Lieutenant Governor, Trevor Nowoski for the Detroit Lions, and even Dave Coulter of the Oakland County, the Oakland County Executive, is interesting coming out for our first pitch. So what we'd like to do is, we like to prioritize, especially our opening day first pitch, with having two people out there, and we'd love to have the city manager and the mayor join us for first pitch on Memorial Day in the evening at 6:30. So we will send you an email and let you know, and hopefully we'll get that on your schedule. As you know, our mascot is Patty Odinger, if you haven't seen Patty Odinger. That's our mascot. And also, we have recently just been approved to put a new patio, not Patty Odinger, by the engineering department at the park. So we are looking forward to that improvement to the park that will not only be used for leprechaun games, but for ROSL games, or any activities that take place at that park. It's going to be a beautiful patio, and we've gone through all their approvals, and now it's just a matter of getting the final production done, and that hopefully, with our weather, hopefully it's coming up soon. Lastly, I just want to remind you that there's still time. The Royal Oak Lucky Loop 5K will be taking place in 12 days. It's on April 5th, and it will be taking place on Memorial Park, not just in the ballfields, but also all throughout the park. We have over 100 people signed up already. They're going to run walk, and some of them are going to be even virtual. I don't know how you do a virtual 5K, but we're going to figure that out. So this will be an exciting time for us to introduce, again, introduce the park to a lot of people who are not just baseball people, but who are all kinds, have all kinds of different interests. So I want to thank you, and we will continue to give you updates on the great things happening at Memorial Park. And remember, I want you to come to these games, and probably not the best night to pick to choose it, but I'm buying your tickets to these games. So I want you to come. So you just got to let us know, and even you, City Attorney Nick, we welcome, we want you to come to the park, we want you to see what we're doing to the park, and we want to see your beautiful park there going on. So we thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sackett. Anyone else like to speak at public comment? All right, going once, going twice. All right. We're coming back to the side of the table and moving forward with item number seven, Consent Agenda. Would anyone like to pull anything off of the consent agenda? Commissioner Chiesa?
I'd like to pull item L, please.
I'm sorry. Item L? L. Yes, yes. Commissioner Polo?
At the request of the city manager, item Q.
Thank you. And Commissioner?
Item P, please.
So we are removing item L, P, and Q from the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, motion to approve the consent agenda minus the three items.
Okay, is there a second? Commissioner Chiesam? Any discussion? All in favor? I'm sorry. Did you have any? We can pull back that vote and have Commissioner Cola. Do you want to pull something else off?
No, just a quick discussion, Madam Mayor Proton.
I'm sorry.
I just want to point out the arts board purchase on this. Once again, we kind of talked about this a couple of weeks ago, but it's awesome that we continue to buy art for public spaces within the city. You know, this is, I see staffs here who's been working on this, so, you know, thank you to the staff who's worked on this, thank you to the committee members who have gone through this, I began a mural on Henry Ford, a bunch of pre-stated art pieces, and then once again, very appropriately, another piece, a piece of art is staying in Fruish Park. So this is a really cool experience.
Thank you, Commissioner Cola. Any other discussion? All right, so are you ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So moving forward with item number L, or not item L.
Yeah, so L is in regards to the designation of nonprofit status Memorial Park Improvement Corporation. I had a few questions about this item. I'm not quite sure the best way to move forward. Do you want me to just bring out my questions, or?
So, if you wanted to ask your question?
Okay, so, okay, so the Memorial Park Improvement Corporation, this is asking for us to recognize this 501(c)(3) or nonprofit organization. You know, I think we are all familiar with Memorial Park, it's one of our more than 50 parks in the city, and it has a lot of really wonderful features to it, including it's the site of the art fair, there's a playscape, there's a veterans memorial, and there's also included the stadium where the leprechauns play. And looking through the documents that were provided to us, I looked at the Articles of Incorporation, and while the name indicates that the designation of nonprofit says, sorry, that the organization is, I need to pull up the full name to have it in front of me, sorry, is for the Memorial Park Improvement, looking through the Articles of Incorporation, it seems to be very focused on the leprechauns, you know, well, I'm not quite sure, some of my questions, like what it's focused on with the leprechauns. And I also want to say the leprechauns are also a really wonderful, you know, asset that we have in our community. I think it's a great place for, you know, families to go and see a baseball game, but I do have concerns about the name of this organization really indicating that it's for the betterment of Memorial Park at large, but it seems to be very focused. So those are my concerns, and my questions were kind of to speak to that, like what is the scope of where funds brought in on this nonprofit, where they go, and maybe some questions about the board of directors and how we interact with them.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Chiesam. I've had similar questions, and so I invited representatives of the Leprechauns and the Memorial Park Improvement Corporation to take some of those questions, and I've shared some of those questions in advance. So why don't we give an introduction?
I'm Mark Stowers, I work with the Leprechauns, I'm the public address announcer, also the media and public relations director. I am the president of the Memorial Park Improvement Corporation. Our goal, our mission, is to improve the whole park. It's 24-plus acres, and we're not just focused on what we're doing there, but we want to make this a great place for generations to come. It's been there for a while, it does need some love, it does need some help. So, yeah, we want to help field number three, but we're looking at 24-plus acres there. You know, there's trees, there's a playground, there's a place for picnics, it's also the art fair, there's so much going on there. We would like to raise money, like to help remodel, renovate, and keep this going for generations.
Do you want to ask more questions? I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about your board of directors and to what degree you interact with the city, since it is a city, a city park, with, you know, within the board of directors, within your structure?
Okay, we have four people on our board today. Judy Davids accepted an invitation to join the board, so she can represent the city, she knows so much about the city, lifelong resident, or she grew up close by and has lived here for quite a while, and she's excited, and said in her words, she's honored to join our board and be a part and help us seamlessly work with the city.
If I can ask, you mentioned Judy Davids, who are the others that would be a part of your board?
Myself, general manager Mark Sackett is our secretary, and Danny Weiss, who is our marketing director.
Does your board have bylaws?
Yes, we have bylaws. I think they were part of the packet.
No, we didn't get them.
Okay, I don't have those with me, but we do have a guy on our staff who is a, I would call him a bylaws expert, so he's going to look over our bylaws and firm them up. But yes, we do have bylaws, and I can get those to you.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Stowers? Commissioner Chiesam?
Sorry, can I just confirm, did you say that Ms. Davids came on today, or she's been on for a while?
Today.
Okay, all right.
When I got, I got an email from Joe saying, can we get somebody with the city? And so we started thinking, so Judy would be perfect, and she was very happy to be a part of that.
So Judy came on today, the others, Mr. Sackett, yourself, and Mr.?
Danny Weiss.
Danny Weiss. Were they already existing board members, or?
Yes.
Or have they started today as well?
No, they were all existing board members.
All right, so until today, there were three board members, and then Judy?
Yes.
Ms. Davids, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Started today. Okay.
In your bylaws, how is your board makeup? So, is it just going to be four, or are you trying to recruit more folks? Is there different?
We like having four. The bylaws state we can have between three and nine, so we try to keep it small so that we can have a meeting, we can get things done, we can make decisions quickly, hopefully.
So, the organization, I think, has been in existence for like a year and a half or something like that?
Yes, 2023.
And can you give us a breakdown of how the funds have been spent so far, like what you've been putting those improvements into?
Yes.
I guess that's my spot, I'm the one who's writing the check. So, we haven't really, this has been a very vague organization, simply because we've been waiting for getting the blessings from the city. We have raised money through the Beer Festival that we do on, the day is Saturday before Memorial Day. We've done different, we've received different donations from whatever, for people just saying, you know, hey, how can I help? What can I do? And they're $25, $10, whatever, something little. Recently, we've got, we're receiving, we're receiving a lot of funds for the 5K run, which has been phenomenal. And again, the 5K run's going all throughout the park, so it's not just baseball stuff. So that's how we've been bringing money in, but again, it's not, it's not like we're getting rich or anything out of this thing. It's been slow because we've been kind of just keeping it low-key. Where we spent it, we did have, I think we have about 12, the last time, when I went through the QuickBooks, it was about $12,000. And so far, we put $3,000 into the patio that we've, with the contractor. We've also made a donation to the Royal Oak Sandlot League for $3,000. So now we're just kind of waiting for that contractor to give us the bad news about the total cost of that patio, which could range in the, you know, 25,000 to 30,000, and then hopefully the leprechauns will bill them out and everything, we'll be able to pay for that. So that's where it's going. And we've got, obviously being a nonprofit, and I've run a nonprofit for the last 25, 20 years now, 2005, and we're pretty up to key on our books and everything, and where they need to be. So we're wide open with, we need to share any of that information with you.
Do you want to ask any questions? Commissioner Macy?
Just wondered if you've been in contact with the World War II memorial fundraisers, like that group as well, because we already have a group that's fundraising for that park.
I've been in contact with them, not on a fundraising effort, but just letting them know that we're there, and we're going to be doing this, and we can maybe work with them in some way. But we have supported their events, and they've been at our games, throwing out a first pitch, those kind of things, so we have a great working relationship with them.
Okay, I would encourage you to continue working with them and maybe strengthen that relationship. One thing that concerned me when I saw this was this call at the Memorial Park Improvement Fund, I just wondered if someone who was thinking, I want to donate money to this World War II memorial, might be confused, and so I just want to make sure that there's clarity between those organizations, but also some cooperation, because it does seem like there could be some ways you could work together to raise money on behalf of both organizations.
We make quite a few donations of merchandise and tickets to Judy and John May, you know, for, obviously for to help them raise money as well. So, yeah, that's, again, the park, we're trying to look at the park.
Anyone else? Is there a motion? Commissioner Macy?
Move approval?
All right, is there a second? Commissioner Douglas? Any comment or discussion? Commissioner Chiesam?
I didn't move, because, you know, I really want to kind of get a sense of, you know, what the thoughts are at the table. I, you know, I appreciate what you're doing, and I appreciate that, you know, the wants for all of our parks, I think, exceed what our city budget tends to be. But I do have some concerns about the lack of clarity with the organization. I'd love to see the bylaws, I'd love to, you know, really draw a closer tie between what you're doing at the 501(c)(3) and our, you know, city, and I'm really glad that Ms. Davids is going to be on the board, I think that's a really great step. But I am still a little bit uncomfortable that we don't have the bylaws, we, you know, I felt like the mission, as described in our Articles of Formation, wasn't really clear about the broader scope of that, if it is for the 24 acres. So I'm still a little bit uncomfortable, so I'm not going to vote in favor of that. I'm going to vote opposed.
Commissioner Cola?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Proton. Just hearing, there's a lot going on right now, I hear a lot of changes have been made. It sounds like there's still some questions being asked. I'd be comfortable postponing this for two weeks to let city staff continue to talk to the leprechauns, you know, we're all partners here, so they could talk, hammer out the rest of this language, and then make sure that there's a clean version with all the documents. That way, we're still hitting opening day, and, you know, we still, with 63 days, there's still time that we can postpone this for indefinite period. So I'm going to move to amend the motion to postpone.
Okay, there's a motion to amend. Is there a second? Commissioner Herzog? Any discussion on the motion to amend? Commissioner Macy?
Sort of odd to amend a motion. Yeah, it's a new motion, it feels like, but I guess I wanted to hear if they're, like, understanding what you're saying about 63 days, but also having run raffles for the PTA, there's like a pretty long lead time for that, so I, maybe they, they don't need our approval, but I think they do, so I just wondered if there was, if they had math on the numbers. Like, does postponing this two weeks cause a problem for you, or would it be fine?
It'll squeeze the deadline to get all the raffle licenses in if the state doesn't slow us down too much.
I think the priority is, yes, we're trying to get your approval so we can get the raffles. We want to do 50/50 raffles with utilizing MPIC, so those funds can go directly to the entire park. So you're right on there with, that's what we're, that's what we're trying to get the approval for, for the raffles. We can use the nonprofit status for other things, but nothing that's, nothing really important, but I mean, we don't, I don't really want to say we really use it for really any other things, but we just want to try to get legitimate, and the bylaws are, I don't want to say sketchy, but they're somewhat vague. And they're vague because we didn't have, we didn't know this whole process, and we wanted to get your blessing so that we could make more, and we bring Judy on board to get it more detailed and everything there.
Commissioner Douglas?
So, you do have your letter of determination from the IRS?
Yes.
And of course, your corporate status with the state of Michigan?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I'll say this, I mean, no nonprofit has to come before us to choose a name, establish the corporation, you know, apply for and obtain public charity status. The only thing, the only reason, and it's this weird Michigan law, where in order to get a gaming license, you have to come to your local municipality for approval. And so I guess I'm inclined to say, if they pass muster with the state of Michigan, and they pass muster with the Internal Revenue Service, and they've got a bank account, whether or not, I'm wild about them using a name of one of our parks in their corporate name, that matter was taken out of our control a year and a half ago. So I'm not inclined to delay the action, and I am inclined to support the foundational motion.
Okay, Commissioner Cola?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Proton. I feel, right now, I don't know if it passed, frankly, so I think we can get to a unanimous yes in a couple of weeks, and two weeks delay, like, I think we all want to see this work. It sounds like there's been a lot of change, especially now that we're adding a city staff person to this board. I actually would like clarification myself, is Ms. Davids there as a private citizen, or is she there as the community development director for the city of Royal Oak? Is that position that we continue to maintain, if Ms. Davids no longer holds that position, but there's someone else? So I think there's a lot of questions back and forth that we can probably get an answer to in two weeks, and once again, just bring it to the table.
Commissioner Macy?
I think the voting will take care of this for us, because we're going to vote first on the substitute motion, and if that does not pass, then I would guess that the original motion will pass.
Okay, so right now, we have a motion, substitute motion on the table, to postpone this for two weeks while we get the bylaws and get additional information as it relates to this organization and its structure. All right. Any other questions or discussion? All right. All in favor of the substitute motion?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. All right, so, so the motion, it looks like it is tied, so that motion fails, is that correct, Mr. Herzog?
Correct.
Okay.
It fails.
All right, so is there a new motion?
No, the original motion.
Oh, we're going back to the original motion, thank you.
Well, yes. Now, Commissioner Col, now that Mr. Col is right, oh, don't give me that look. So if, what happens if we say no right now, they're just done, or they can come back?
So as Commissioner Douglas pointed out, they're still a nonprofit, they can still raise money, they just aren't recognized to conduct charitable gaming 50/50 raffles at that. I'd have to look at the law, I'm not sure whether or not there's a timeframe where they can come back and ask for re-recognition if it fails. It's technically a failed motion, so not sure what the law says on that, but if it fails, I don't know what the ramification bars them from seeking approval in the future, and what timeframe they can seek approval in the future if indeed they satisfy the concerns and questions raised.
Okay, well then, I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners if they are inclined to amend this motion in such a way that it would satisfy them to pass it now, like to add, we need to get the bylaws, assuming that, as has been explained to us now a couple times, the things that maybe we want changed won't be changed by this motion one way or the other, this is pretty much an up or down raffle, yes, raffle, no vote. Wondering if there's a way to amend it such that this would pass today, or if that's not on the table.
So you're seeking a modification to, or you're?
I'm just wondering if someone else is seeking a modification to it, if that would be?
Exploring the modification of perhaps limiting this to, for purposes of the gaming license, or obtaining information in the future, but now approving this for purposes of obtaining the gaming license. All right. Did you have something?
I could offer suggestions.
Okay, well, let me hear from Commissioner Chiesam.
Okay, so if I'm under, okay, so what if, if we could get a copy of the bylaws? So can we, if it's approved, could it be contingent on us getting a copy of the bylaws so we could have a little bit more clarity on the organizational structure? Because that was a big part of my concerns. I think that I would be willing to go with. I don't know if.
Can I?
Go ahead, do you want to, and then I'll chime in.
Commissioner Herzog? So just to comment on what Commissioner Chiesam was saying, though, if there's an issue with those bylaws, or if we have an issue with, like, how the staff is interacting with? with, then there's not, like, there's no, nothing we can do. It doesn't matter. So it doesn't really matter if we see the bylaws, or how staff interacts with this organization, or because we've already approved it. Right?
Okay. I mean, so what we're approving is whether or not they can, they can run a raffle. But if their bylaws are terrible and they are mean to Judy, we'll come after you if they're mean to Judy. We can't, we still can't take away their status as a nonprofit. They can still do all the other things that they want, they just can't do a raffle. So we wouldn't be able to punish them by not letting them do a raffle this year, although we could in the future. But it just, yeah, I mean, it's, I think what we're asking for, you're right, that what we're asking for, like, yes or no, we're losing the ability to do anything. But I think we already lost that ability, I guess is what I'm saying. Like, we're talking about an issue that's not really on the table.
Mr. Gortowski?
What I'm kind of hearing, and I'm just kind of throwing this out here, is maybe that if you have assurances or have particular conditions as a part of your approval, that would satisfy some of the concerns and questions moving forward, partnering, part, entering into a, a good partnership with the city as far as, you know, the, the activities and the funds raised, the use of the funds raised for, on behalf of the city's park, that there could be, I don't think that's out of order to put some conditions on, on your approval. I mean, at the end of the day, we apply our resolution recognizing them, but it doesn't necessarily mean that maybe you could do some conditions to investigate all the concerns that were raised, and then somehow bring this back with a report to the commission that here's what's, here's what's been done, here's what's been discussed. Maybe that's a path forward to maybe satisfy the concerns that have been raised, and making sure that that partnership and the relationship and the, the, the activities are, are copacetic with the city's visions as well. So it's, it's just a thought.
I think in our best interest, the Memorial Park Improvement Corporation, it's our best interest to, to satisfy any concerns. You know, I certainly, we certainly don't, I mean, yes, we have a ton of Lebonos, of course, but we certainly don't want to get, we don't want to butt heads with, with the city. We want to make this a great relationship, you know, and that's, and this is just another way of trying to, again, raise funds to help the entire park. So that's my word. You have to take my word.
Commissioner Herzog?
For the 50/50 raffle, that's what we're kind of approving, right? Does that come back to us every year then, if they want to do the raffle? Or is it just this one time, and then whenever they want to raffle?
Neither's just this one time.
So it's a one-time approval? They can operate as long as they don't violate any gaming laws or anything at some point if, for some reason, we can, I believe we can revoke that recognition if things go sideways. For recognition to engage in that charitable gaming license, we would have to notify the state gaming, charitable gaming division of our decision to rescind our resol, your resolution to approve. But it's a one-time thing moving forward.
Commissioner Cheesem?
I mean, I know that we have a long history of partnership over the years. And so I do believe, I, I would like to have the bylaws come our way. You know, we can make that, perhaps make that a, you know, a requirement for this approval, because I, I do think that it is important to have clarity. If, if you're raising funds for this 24-plus acres of parkland, that is city parkland, I think it's really important for us to have close relationships and, and clarity and transparency around those processes. That, that's really what my, the central core of what my concern is. I do believe that we've been working together, and I, you know, I don't want to stand in the way of raising funds for, you know, any aspect of the park, as long as we can have that, you know, clarity. And, you know, I think that clarity should also include, like, how the funds get utilized. I mean, I, you know, I really would like to see that over time. And I, I know that in the write-up in our report, it included a, a report as part of what we would be asking. So I would be comfortable voting in favor if we can have the bylaws and a commitment to clarity between the two entities.
So right now, the original motion is on the table. Is that an amended motion? Or a substitute motion, I guess?
I guess I would just amend it to include that they will send us the copy of the bylaws and that, you know, you know, I don't know how legal this is, but, you know, and an agreement to work together and to communicate about what, how the money's spent. So, I don't know, Nick can make that sound more legalese.
All right. Is there a second to that, Commissioner? All right, any discussion? Trying to make sure there's no. All right, yes.
If I may, so there's a cover letter that was provided to the commission for this evening. Some recommendations were made in that cover letter regarding overview of programming, community engagement efforts, summary of their fundraising initiatives, financial contribution to various improvements, updates on investments related to Memorial Park. And I think there was some audit type of, like, year-end type of audit type of concern. So maybe the better motion is to not only include the bylaws and the partnership, but include those recommendations from the, in furtherance of that partnership, from the report as submitted to the commission in the agenda packet. If that helps.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. That's my new amendment.
How do we underline this?
Well, if that's a friendly amendment, the original maker could accept those as a friendly, and we could add those to the original if you deem those to be friendly.
I think it's very friendly, so is there a friendly second? Yes. All right. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. So do we need to go back to the original to?
That was it. That was the original motion, because the original maker amended her original motion. So congratulations.
Thank you. We look forward to keeping Memorial Park, Premier Park, for generations to come.
She did, and she accepted the amendment. Okay, you're the one. You can amend the original motion.
Okay.
It's okay.
I'm sorry, now we're on to P. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I, for 11 years, have represented the Royal Oak City Commission ex officio on the Board of Royal Oak Youth Assistance. And year after year, I've been impressed by the work that this organization does in two ways, really. One is, and the money we're approving here today, the $20,000, is matched by the Oakland County Courts and the Royal Oak Schools to provide a social work team to work with young people who are in danger of coming into the criminal justice system. So that's our official action. But the organization also raises money independently to fund a number of programs that help young people and their families along the way. And so I'd like very much to ask their board chair, Shelley Kemp, to come up and say a few words. She's supported here by several board, other board members from Royal Oak Youth Assistance. And she's going to tell you even better than I can what a great job the organization does.
I was hoping you'd just keep going, so I could go, thanks, Shar, what she said. Good evening, everyone. I am Shelley Kemp. I am the chair for Royal Oak Youth Assistance. I am new this year, but I have done it before. And one of our previous chairs, Sam Lynch is here, as, as well as two of our other board members, and also our treasurer. Yeah, so Royal Oak Youth Assistance, it is, youth assistance is unique to Oakland County. It is the only place that exists, exists in the country, is in Oakland County. We were a grassroots organization when it started 50 some odd years ago. We still are that. It is in 26 other locations in Oakland County. Royal Oak Youth Assistance is, I feel, a pretty high-functioning youth assistance office. And, you know, we have, we have camp scholarships for 23, 24. We had, we helped 43 kids go to camp in various forms, sixth grade camp, then, you know, overnight camps and that kind of stuff. And we also have skill-building grants. And that can, that can be a violin lesson, that can be cheer lessons, or tutoring. So we, we help students with, who are, who have financial issues and so they can be kids and learn and have, do fun things like, like they should. We also have an emergency needs fund. We used it a lot during COVID. Last year, we, give or take $9,500 worth of emergency needs. That's paying for consumers' energy, that's paying for groceries, that's paying for rent when a family can't afford it. So we do that. We also have a youth recognition program for, on April 22nd, if anybody is interested, you know where to find me. It is at the farmer's market. We'd love to have you see what it is we do. Youth recognition, it does that. It recognizes youth in our community who do kind of go beyond, go beyond this, the, the shoveling somebody's walk once. They, this is, these are organize, these are groups of kids that do good in the community over and over and over again, or individual kids. Rising Star Award is for children who traditionally maybe don't get recognized for being that, that A-plus student, and the kid, the kid that keeps trying even, even with lots of difficulty. And we, we, we recognize those kids as well. And then also, we have family, a family education. That kind of is self-explanatory, but we do family ed in all kinds of different ways. And then also our Second Step Program, which is our social-emotional learning curriculum that is in now all of the elementary schools. It was in two for years, and now it's in all six. And that costs some money, and we think this, we had an ARPA grant for that, and also the Royal Oak Schools paid for the teachers, or the licenses for that. So like Shar, Commissioner Douglas said, Royal Oak Schools support us, and also the Sixth Judicial Circuit Court Family Division. And also our sponsors, our volunteers, people that just donate out of the goodness of their heart. That's what we do with our money. We have one paid person, that's our, our admin staff, but everybody else is a volunteer. So, any questions? And we thank you for helping us.
Commissioner?
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you all. Like, this is such an amazing service that touches so many kids in our community. And, you know, it's a need that may not be seen all the time, but it's always there. So the fact that you all are out there is phenomenal. And, you know, thank you for all the kids that you help.
You're welcome. We love doing it. And thank you, Commissioner Douglas, for staying with us. And I'm slowly roping another one of you in to help us once Sher leaves the City Commission. But thank you for supporting us. We appreciate you.
Did you have something?
I'd like to move approval of the item.
All right. Second by Commissioner Cheesem. All right, any discussion? And again, thank you, Ms. Kemp.
Oh, you're welcome.
For showcasing all of the services that you have to offer. I think there's quite a few of those services that many people didn't know about.
Yeah.
So it's nice to be able to communicate that and let the city of Royal Oak know what's being done by this organization. So thank you.
You're welcome. It's our pleasure. Thank you. Have a great night, you guys.
Thank you. All right, ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, ayes have it. And we are on, this is the longest consent agenda ever. So we are on to.
I gotta wind it up.
Commissioner Coles?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. So I requested a motion from the commission to remove seven, item, Consent agenda item 7Q, which was the filling of the network administration position today for a few reasons. One, I want to say we had some things lost in translation. So there's some coordination. This item wasn't quite ready yet. We have some refinements to do with the job description, finalizing that. But more so, there was some of the narrative that was missing. And, and I can speak to some of the comments, just to clarify some things. This is not a new position, so that's one thing that we'll be bringing back to the table. We are reclassifying an existing vacancy for a geographic information technical position. We are reclassifying that to address network administration. And we do believe that network administration is important for the city to control. Right now, we contract that out. So if we are to make any adjustment on any node in our network, that could be changing a phone jack, we have to call this company and we have to accept their hourly rate. And we also have to accept their level of service. So from a cybersecurity control and a disaster recovery perspective, that doesn't put the city in a position of control. Should a tornado hit the city hall, knock out our network, the city would be subject to the response of the contractor. We don't ever want to be subject to the response of the contractor for our network administration. So this is actually just a reclassifying position. It's not a headcount increase. And we're going to be actually reducing the service contract cost by about $41,000 per year. So that, that will be back in the full recommendation. So my request is for the commission to postpone the filling of this position until we're finally ready to post it in April.
So this is essentially just bringing that position in-house rather than spending money on a contractor?
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to postpone? Commissioner Coles, any second? Commissioner Herzog, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we are off to item number eight. We have Ms. Donahue.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. So this past summer, we finished paving Masoi Road. This was between Tonawanda and Hampton, and this was a special assessment paving project. And so tonight, I'm here to present standard resolution five. This will establish the final cost to be assessed to the district. The final project cost to the residents was about 4% lower than the initial estimate that we had provided them back within standard resolution two. And so for that reason, because we're under budget, there's no need for another public hearing on this item. The properties were notified of this item on the agenda tonight, and staff is recommending approval of standard resolution five. This is for roll 2415-2436 on Masoi Road. And just a reminder that this is a roll call vote.
Okay. Are there any questions for Ms. Donahue? Sure.
Move approval of standard resolution five?
Okay, there is a motion, a second. Commissioner Coles, any discussion? All right, this is a roll call vote. So we'll start with Ms., Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Coles?
Yes.
Commissioner Herzog?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheesem?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right. So that passes. Thank you, Ms. Donahue. So we had a very long consent, but now we are down to item number nine. Is there a motion? Commissioner Macy? All right, Commissioner Herzog?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, is there a second? Commissioner Douglas, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The meeting is adjourned.